Like to call the meeting to order? We have a roll call, please.
Dr. Genovacy. Dr. Liliston. Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Suwicky.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Here.
Dr. Wilson.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Laws was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being reported for the purpose of Board review, future reference, preparation of minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we'd like to ask you to sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands my nation under God, indivisible,天地， and rest its law. Okay, we need to raise first and a second to approve the minutes for the November 13th regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining or opposing? Resolution passes? Alright, let's go ahead and go into our student report from our representative Hannah Chu. Oh, yeah.
Okay, now that, oh, sorry. Now that we're about halfway through December, we are on halfway through the second marking period and almost that winter break. Last week, the choir performed at their winter concert. The orchestra winter concert is today at 7:00 PM, and the band concert and dance festival are next week. We have over 325 students participating in winter athletics, which includes ice hockey, swim and dive, track, basketball, and cheerleading. There are some upcoming focus groups for students to discuss their experiences with student-led conferences. The Student Council is preparing for the upcoming Winter Spirit Week, pep rally, and school-wide rock, paper, scissors competition, as well as our first-ever school-wide secret gift exchange. And finally, Ms. Riley has created an alumni database last spring. A few hundred people have registered, and she's going to host a tour of the building for interested alumni over winter break. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you Hannah. Any questions or comments from the Board? Alright, as always, thank you. Feel free to stay or feel free to go. Do your homework. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to invite Patricia Riley to come up to the...
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting me back. We do a lot of really neat things at Hopewell Valley Central High School, and there's a lot to be proud of. I am thankful every day that I am the principal. But one of the things that I am the most proud of is the inclusive environment that we've created. And recently, we were nationally recognized by the Special Olympics as a Unified Champion School. We were only one of two schools in the state of New Jersey to receive this recognition this year, and it's really an incredible accomplishment. Our journey with Unified started several years ago when Coach Chris Fossil and Athletic Director Tripp Becker brought Unified Track to HVCHS. Since then, we've represented Special Olympics at the international and the national level, which is really exciting. From there, Megan McGowan, Chavez now, and Michelle Brennan created the Unified Club, which partners with a lot of clubs and organizations within the school to host Unified hours and special events. And then most recently, Brooke Garcia Andrews and Holly Kaufman created the Best Buddies Club, which partners students and helps people develop authentic friendships and relationships and promotes social events for all students. These organizations, these groups are really remarkable, but what makes them most remarkable are the students who are involved in them. And so, thank you so much for allowing me to bring some representatives here to see you tonight. They are each going to introduce themselves, tell you about what part of our inclusive environment they are a part of, and then share a favorite inclusive memory with you. So, if you all could come on up.
Hello, my name is Carter Horvath, and I'm a sophomore at Hopewell Valley Central High School and the Secretary for Unified Club. This is my second year participating in Unified Club and has been quickly become one of my favorite activities I'm involved in. Considering how much I enjoy all the activities we do as part of Unified is rewarding enough, but seeing the joy of the faces of all my friends and hearing their laughs is what makes it so special to me. Every moment I get to spend with my friends is so much fun, and we always have such a great time. Although I play three sports here, I always look forward to the time I get to spend with my friends at... Sorry. One of my favorite memories ever was at the celebration dance. When we made a dance circle and everyone took turns jumping in, showing off the dance moves in front of everyone. Some of us were being funny and laughing, and some of us really had a good time. I also love playing basketball once or twice a week with my friends, and one of my most favorite things we did was gingerbread houses this week, which was last week, actually. I'm so honored to be here and proud of Unified Champion School status and all the people who made it such a huge success, including Ms. Brennan, who received the Governors' Education of the Year Award, and Ms. Shaves, who also helped this club out so much. Deciding to get involved with Unified is one of the best and most rewarding decisions I've ever made. Thank you and have a good night.
Hi, I'm Matthew Helmrich. I'm the President of Unified Club, and I am in tenth grade. My favorite memories of inclusivity at HVCHS include the relationships I've built through the participation, through my participation in Best Buddies and Unified Club. And these, this participation has carried over to my sports. For example, very often at football practice, the physical workload can be grueling and tensions can get high. These, these rough practices are only made better when I see my friend John, who plays an important role on the team, by going up and down the sideline, making jokes, and giving high fives and fist bumps. Another highlight is when I see my friend Robbie at swim practice, whom I'm able to connect with because we were both in Best Buddies and Unified Club. Robbie attends practice every day and is a great inspiration to the team. I'm grateful for the opportunities that HVCHS provides us to connect with the students on a personal level, and I look forward to strengthening relationships and making new ones in the future. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Croce. I do chair Unified Track, and my favorite is being part of Unified Play and Best Buddies. And my favorite memory is Unified working towards the Special Olympics USA Games with Ms. Chavez and Coach Fossil, Coach Fossil and Coach Walsh. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Steer. I'm currently a sophomore at Hopewell Valley Central High School, and I'm part of Unified Club, Unified Track and Field, and Best Buddies Club. One of my favorite inclusive events at HVCHS was the Unified Best Buddies Dance that took place last week. I've always wanted to go to a high school dance, but never really felt comfortable doing so. I felt welcomed and accepted at Unified Dance, and it was a lot of fun. I'm grateful for being in Unified Club and meeting new people at this second time.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sonia Tenbarge. I am the President of Best Buddies Club, and my job is to work with the rest of our leadership to organize events and connect our student body together. My favorite memory is probably our Best Buddies Friendship Block that happened in, I think, March or May of last year. It was, last year was our first year that we were offering this club, so it was really wonderful to get to connect with the chapters of Best Buddies at other schools and colleges like TCNJ and Princeton. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ravi Westo. I'm a senior at the high school. I am the co-president of the Unified Club, the Director of Best Buddies, and the co-captain of the swim team. I also participate in Unified Spring Tack and the Baking Club. My feeling, me and Cindy, the high school, was the celebration we had for being named a Unified Champion School. The food was great, and we had, it was fantastic, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kate Penelli, and I'm a senior at the high school. I've been a part of Unified for four years now. I helped create Best Buddies with Sonia and the advisors. I'm the Vice President. I am a student assistant. This is my second year. In both years I've been in Ms. Chavez's class. Last year was science. This year is a new course called Independent Living. Super interesting. And I do Unified Basketball, and I was very, very lucky to be able to go to Nationals in Florida with the Unified Track Team two years ago. That was an amazing experience. Being able to have all of these experiences through the high school helped me narrow down what I wanted to do in my future and choose to be working with Special Education and wanting to continue that into my career. My, there's so many memories over the past four years, but I would, I would say my favorite memory was the clapout that Ms. Riley and the rest of the school was able to make. The, all of the hallways in the high school were lined up, and me and my fellow teammates were able to walk through the hallway, signs everywhere, all like people cheering, and it was really like an amazing moment to see everyone so like proud of our team and everything that we were able to accomplish.
Hi, my name is Siena. Coast Country and Trail. Yeah. I'd like a bow. Yeah, fine, yeah. Yeah. I did. No. I don't know.
Um, hi, my name is Grace, and I'm a senior here at the high school. And I joined Unified Club my freshman year, and I've been involved ever since. And then my junior and my senior year, I ran for position for the Unified Club. And my junior year, I was the coordinator, and this year I am the Vice President. And one of my favorite memories would definitely have to be last October when we did a corn maze, and that was super fun because I'm not the best at corn mazes, but it was super fun just being like in an environment where people could just use teamwork and bounce ideas off of each other and use collaboration. And my team ended up getting first place, which I'm very happy about, but it was just super fun, and I'm definitely going to miss like the collaboration and the teamwork that Unified Club offers.
These students are just a few of the dozens that are involved in these different opportunities. So, we would really like to thank all of you for the support that you provide each and every day. Mr. Nidham and Ms. Donardo are always tremendous. Dr. Therese is always a huge supporter of any crazy initiative we come up with, and I know it really wouldn't be possible without the support of the Board. So, we truly appreciate it and we thank you.
Anyone from the Board like to comment? Okay, well, I will comment on the Board's behalf, and thank you all for coming, one, representing your peers and all the kids that you work with, and just what a joy to have you share stories and I didn't know all of these activities were going on and so integrated, and that's pretty, pretty awesome. I can, I could see the camaraderie between and the desire to support one another, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Keep doing that, keep expanding one another in the way that you already are, so thank you. Anything for you, Dr. Therese?
Well, my favorite memory was indeed the dance party. I shook it down too on the floor there, playing our music from our era. I really had a good time, so thank you for inviting me. And please, keep doing what you're doing. I've, I've rarely seen this kind of integration coming from a Special Education program blending with general education, and all the students truly, truly having real friendships, not Special Olympics where folks kind of sweep in, help with the team, and then walk away. You guys have developed real relationships with each other, and that is so important. So, I just thank you for that, and this team has become the model for how other Unified Teams are forming across the nation. That's a big deal. One of two schools in the whole state of New Jersey, so I'm really proud of you. Congratulations.
Thank you, Principal, whoop. Thank you, Principal Riley, for bringing your students. Thank you. Yes. Okay, wow, it's hard to follow that, but we can and we will, because we have someone really, really important and special to us to acknowledge. Huh, who's that? Adam? I'll save my comments until we're done, but were you...
I guess I'll start. I mean, I was, I think I'm the only one who was here when, Shannon, you were here when he started, right? In 2011? Not on the Board, but here in District, but, and Paulette was too, but I was the only one on the Board here when Adam was elected. And Adam, you're gonna, you're gonna leave big shoes to fill, for sure. I didn't get to work with you directly until the last, you know, few years of your, your term, but you've gone through every committee multiple times. You became our policy guru. You gave us counterpositions when we needed a counterposition to bounce ideas off of. You always came prepared with information and, and facts to support where you were coming from, but again, you were a stalwart on the Board, and you know, when, when you came to the Finance and Facilities Committee, it just made, I felt it made the committee better. You had a different perspective, having not been part of that committee for the first probably seven years of your term or your career here, and, and really pushed us in a new direction, and we've gotten a lot of things done because of the guidance that you've given us with that. Twelve years, Adam. It's, it's, it's not common for folks to stay on Boards of Education for 12 years in four terms to go through it. So, you know, from my perspective, it's sad, it's going to be sad to see you go. We thank you, I thank you for your service and all the contributions you've given to all facets of this Board of Education over time.
Anyone else from the Board like to make a comment?
Adam, I just wanted to thank you for getting me involved on the Board and reaching out and being a mentor in the different committees that I've been on during my short two years here. So, I really appreciate everything that you've done, and thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you all. I, I, just a couple, it's been a privilege to serve Hopewell Township and the District as a whole. It's been a real privilege to serve with everybody here, the administrators, staff, the students, the parents, and my fellow Board members. I'm very glad that eight of you will be returning next year. I think this Board has worked really well together, and I had a very, very nice year going out, so. The only thing I'll say is I'll miss, the key thing I'll miss is how much I learned from all of you. It was never boring. There were some times which were a little bit more challenging than others, but I never stopped learning from all of you, and for that, I'm very much appreciative. And the only thing I'll say to my fellow Board members is just, just remember, keep moving forward. It doesn't always occur quickly, but things keep moving forward, and I was just thinking about this team and everything that folks like Paulette have done for Special Education students since I came in. The best example I can give you is when I came in, the big debate in the District was, should we actually have a common curriculum for our elementary school students? You kind of think about and say, we didn't have a common curriculum? We really didn't. Each school had its distinct way of doing things, which had some advantages, but overall, by the time you get to Timberland, it helps to have the same. So, so thank you all. It's, it's been a privilege.
I just wanted to say a few more words to embarrass you a little further. Bob already talked about, you know, you serving this community for 12 years and the community wanting your support because you were elected for all of those years to, to serve, and during that time, you've demonstrated such a commitment. I don't know if many of you know, but he does work a full-time job. He's a very challenging full-time job where he is out of, out of state a lot, and if he's not here physically, he was, made sure that he was here virtually. I think you probably missed, I can count on one hand the number of meetings that you've missed, but it's not for lack of trying. You stayed informed, you asked lots of questions, you challenged our thinking and practices, you advocated not just for the, the students that you were elected to be here, but all students. You were always advocating for members of this community. You made sure that we were always being fiscally responsible and that we were getting things done. So, you're just the kind of, of Board member that any superintendent would be proud to have. So, I've been very fortunate to have you guide me. I've learned a lot from you. I'm sitting on committee. I'm gonna miss you on policy, although I have somebody in mind that could, could step into your shoes. But I'm just, what I'm gonna miss most of all is your calm and your wisdom that you brought to every Board meeting, every committee meeting, and I'll, I'll always, I also want to thank your family who's here tonight, who put up with all the nights, late nights you're away, all the events that you made sure you were present for, all the papers you were poring over, trying to study and get ahead of these things. So, I wanted to thank you as well, and we have some members of your family, family here tonight. We thank all of you for that long service, and we hope that you're on to some, some rest, kind of, because I know you're still working a very challenging job and more time with your family, but we thank you.
That's very kind of her, and thank you for thanking them, and that, that's probably the most important thing I'll say, too, right? The families don't always...
And finally, just a few words. I was elected into the President's role this year, and it has been a great honor, but one thing I am really certain of is in the front of my mind, it's how do we fill, because you had already said, I'm not running, I'm like, you sure? You sure, you sure? But I was always thinking, how do we fill Adam's shoes? And I always have this sense of responsibility to, almost to your legacy, because who I saw or who I met when I, I took on my first year on the Board was someone who I could follow, someone who, like, all the nerves kind of went away, well, Adam's there. Adam will, Adam will show me the way to do this. So, I had a really genuine sense of calm to look toward your guidance and see how to run a committee to, to, you were my first policy, my first voice on policy, and you read all of it. Read all of it, and had questions, and really important questions, and I just can't thank you enough personally, and as is yours, Board President, I can't thank you enough for up until the very end. Just about an hour ago, not even, he's asking really important questions on the facilities meeting call, so I will miss you. I will always wish you were here, but thank you for showing us the way. No, genuine. I know. Need to take a deep breath there. Okay. We're gonna move on before I get teary. So, just a quick report. This is our last year, last meeting of the year, and it's hard to believe, honestly. You know, year has flown by. We haven't had to close anything or mask anything or, right? Sorry. It's okay, okay. It's, it's okay. Everybody is vaccinated. Everybody is vaccinated now. So, I just want to acknowledge the district. Bob, your team is always plugging holes and undigging things and keeping us coming to the building day in and day out. And we all know that it's not a figurative statement, it is a literal statement. And it happens all over our district. Every administrator, every department, all the staff. This is a long year for them, right? So, I just want to acknowledge everyone getting us this far through the year. We've, you know, just have so much to celebrate and be thankful for, and just thank you. Thank you. That acknowledgement aside, I think it's important to recognize the work we have ahead of us in January and beyond. And so, I just hope everybody has an opportunity to take a deep breath, recognize and acknowledge the things we've accomplished, and prepare for another year. And the great thing is, we get to work together again, most of us. That is all I'd like to say. Dr. Treese, do you have anything to report? Okay, you are the whole report, Adam. Look at you. All right. So, let's see. We are going to do a quick... Quick acknowledgement and presentation on the audit, financial audit that was recently done, and the amazing work that Bob's team has had to do to get us there.
Okay, so, one of the requirements each year, we is for the district to go through what's called an annual comprehensive financial report. The short word for it is our audit. It's statutorily due on December 5th, and as we found out today, we were one of only 35 districts out of the 600 and some districts to actually get it in via December 5th, although the... It looks like the legislature's going to extend the deadline out to the 5th of February, so we rushed for no reason. But anyway, we did get our audit report in. Part of the requirement is to share the results of the report with the board and the corrective action plan, if any. So, just to give the folks at home in here a little overview, the auditors do come out to district. They do some testing for several weeks in June, basically just to pull files, get samples, things like that, test our internal controls. They come back usually for a month or five weeks. This year, they came out in October, and they do a very comprehensive review, and they interview folks from all over the district, all over this building, all of the folks here. All the administrators here have auditors in their offices asking questions and examining data. The auditors also provide ongoing support. If we have a question about how to handle certain things, that's all part of the process. So, it's more of a team effort. They're here to support us, and we're, you know, providing information back to them in the review process. So, there are basically four different kinds of audit opinion you can get. An unmodified opinion, doesn't seem glamorous, but that's the best opinion you can get. A modified opinion means that they, when they examine your books, they had to make some... They had extra questions and modifications they had to make to the financial statements to make sure they were conformed. An adverse opinion is when you have material departures from reporting. That's not a good thing. You don't want to have an adverse opinion or anything financially misrepresented in your audit. And a disclaimer of opinion is really bad. It's when they can't get enough information out of you or from your books, and they can't render any opinion. So, you don't want to be there. We, as they bolded, have an unmodified opinion, again, which just means that our financial reports are presented fairly and in uniform with what the requirements of GAAP are, which are government accounting principles. That's good news for the board, that we do have an unmodified opinion. One of the big things that we discussed in committee tonight, and this is what board members really want to know, is what are our fund balances and the reason why we... This is the way it's presented. It's gonna be presented as $15,938,899. That's not what we have in our bank account. That's not the way it works. The number that we're concerned about is the last number there, the $2.4 million number. That's 2% of our expenditures, which is statutory allowed to keep in your bank as surplus. Doesn't seem like a lot on a $100 million budget, but that's what we're permitted to keep. The other monies have been earmarked for other purposes. The $621,000 at the top are purchases or goods or services that were earmarked for purchase at the end of last year that weren't fully completed or received at June 30th. So, they carry over into the new budget. So, that's not really money in a bank account. That's money that was committed but not yet paid for. The $4.7 million number is the money, you may remember that number, from the money we took from last year and put into this year's budget to balance it. It seems high, but it's not really high. We went from a 4% surplus last year to a 2% surplus last year, and we spent that money on the boiler project up at Hopewell Elementary. $91,000 is maintenance reserve money. It's for an emergency, if something were to happen. We talked about the well pump in the green notes and things. If we didn't have money in our regular budget, that money could have been used for an emergency purpose. It's not a capital project, which has to be approved by the state. The last number, the $8 million in capital reserve, that is for capital projects only. Okay? Long-term facility-type projects that we were talking about last month when we were discussing the referendum. So, we could use some of that money, and we will use some of that money to fund projects prior to going out for referendum. We talked about it last meeting, that we would probably use that to fund a fire alarm project at Stony Brook and boiler work at Central High School, because we can't wait for the referendum process to pan out. That's what that money's used for, okay? That's not money that's able, and we talked, again, talked about it last month, but that's not money that you can use to fill general expenditure holes in your budget. You can't use it to fund salaries. You can't use it to fund those types of purchases. Okay? So, truly, we're at our full 2% surplus. That $2.4 million is statutory where we need to be, and we're happy that we're there. So, we did have three minor audit comments. None of them were substantive in nature, I can't say that word, and it did not affect the opinion that was rendered by our auditors. So, just, we have to discuss them. During their testing, they found that there were cash dispersments, that the purchase order was issued after the purchase was made. It's called a confirming order. We do our very best to avoid that from happening, but sometimes we get staff members who may be not part of the purchasing process, who are... Think they're helping. They make a phone call to a vendor, they order a supply, but they really didn't have authorization to do it. So, they found some instances, and it's few instances, it's three or four instances where they found it, but of a testing sample, it was a significant enough number that they made a comment. We do have procedures in place that identify the folks when they do it. We notify them, and we talk to them about not doing that. But when you have the transient nature of teachers coming and going, and we've had some new clerical folks in all the schools, sometimes that gets missed in the long run. But something that we can easily correct. The second one, again, this is more of a record-keeping issue. We were under the belief that once an employee signed up for a health benefit waiver, some parts of our staff members get a waiver if they don't take our health benefits. They get a payment for that. We were... We thought that we could sign one waiver, and the waiver would be in existence until the employees declared that they no longer wanted the waiver. But statute says you must have the waiver each year. They must re-sign up for the waiver each year. So, we had some employees that had old, expired, according to the auditors, expired waivers. So, what we need to do is make sure that each employee who's getting a waiver re-signs a form each year. So, again, not really a major issue, but outside of statute, and we'll work together with HR to make sure that all of the waivers are signed each year. And the easy way to do it is, we just stop paying the waiver until they send in the form. And when folks are supposed to get a payment and they don't get it, they really... They turn stuff in. The last one has to do with our student activity accounts and areas where deposits were not made timely. By statute, deposits must be made in 48 hours. We had a couple of instances where, again, we have staff members, club leaders and advisors who are collecting money for a field trip, or collecting money for a fundraiser or things like that, and they don't always get all the money to the office quick enough. The reason why they wouldn't waive this one, and I fought for them to waive it, was that there was a check that was three months in the back of somebody's desk that was found and turned in, and they couldn't overlook that one. What we've done to correct that, we've switched to New Bank this year and have installed check readers on all of our accountant's desks in the buildings, so that when checks come in, they feed them through the reader, and it's deposited. So, they don't actually have to go to the bank anymore. Hopefully, that will eliminate the lack of a timely deposit. Again, not a major issue, very common in all school districts within the state, but something we're just gonna keep a closer eye on. Yes? Any questions on the comments or the recommendations we've received? Okay. Good. We have an annual... We have a required annual purchasing training that we do every year in October. And it encompasses the people who are involved in the... Directly involved in the purchasing process, so supervisors, secretaries in the offices, department lead heads, things like that, that are involved day-to-day in the purchasing process. What we're finding out is that we have teachers who are doing these kinds of things, or other folks that are not part of that process, and they say, "Well, I really needed this, so I called and I ordered it." They shouldn't be involved in the purchasing process, but the vendors don't follow the rules. So, I need to send out another letter to our vendors, saying is, "We'll no longer honor that." But this year, Dr. Pliss has had me come in and speak to new teachers, and we're gonna start doing it that way. And meeting, getting teachers when they're new, and saying is, you know, "You don't have the authority to do this. If there's something that you need, you need to talk to this person in your building." So, we're gonna kind of push down the training for everybody. It'd be hard to do a purchasing training for all, you know, 600 members of the teaching staff, and by and large, it's not... They noted three instances that that happened, but that was significant enough. So, it's not happening on a routine basis, but when it sneaks in, and it's like I was saying in committee, it's Murphy's Law. You know, the ones, the three times that they found it, might have been the only three times that happened the entire year. So, again, when you have so many people involved that could be involved in the purchasing process, you have to get your vendors on board and saying is, "I don't have a purchase order. I'm not doing it." And we have a lot of vendors who will not react to anything without a properly endorsed purchase order.
So, I actually, I wanted to follow up on that. So, what I am surprised about is that we do have vendors that will send stuff out without a...
I couldn't hear you. I heard you.
What I am surprised about is that we actually do have vendors who will send stuff without a purchase order. That's more surprising.
It may not have even been a vendor we were using at the time. It's, you know, they...
Oh, so they just needed something. So, do we have a different process for minor purchases where...
No.
You can just...
No.
So, we don't have an expense report process?
No.
Everything has to go.
Everything needs to have a purchase order. So, I mean, it's just, again, it's, as Pam said, it's continuing to inform folks. I just sent, when I got this comment, I sent out a global email to all staff, reiterating the fact that no staff member other than me, through a properly issued purchase order, can bind the district into a contract. So, hopefully, you know, and maybe doing that more on a regular basis, quarterly, just, you know, reminding folks that if they need something, they need to speak to the person in the building responsible for the purchasing process. Okay? And lastly, just, you know, it's, at this point, you know, I take the time to thank my staff, because without, you know, and the auditor did the same thing, without those folks in my office on a daily basis who are processing the 5,000-plus purchase orders we do each year, we wouldn't be there. But not only my staff, but it's the staff in all the buildings, and also in this building. You know, there's a lot of purchasing. Vicki's office does a lot of purchasing and works closely with my staff to make sure that things are, you know, the trains are running on time, for lack of a better term. And we couldn't do it without, you know, all of those folks. I mentioned the accountability piece. In that purchasing training, there's a manual that's posted on our website and issued to all folks. So, there is a manual that they can read if they had questions about the purchasing process. What I try to tell my staff when things like this happen is that their job is to educate children, right? So, my job is to make sure that we have the stuff that they need to educate those kids. And it's hard. They're not... That's not the focus of their job, is the purchasing process, which is why we try to limit it to a select and few folks that do that. Part of the audit, we're not going through it this year, but last year, part of my audit, this audit, is a huge part of CUSAC, the fiscal piece of it. And we do have oversight from the county office in a lot of the things that we do to provide additional oversight in our purchasing. But again, I'm pleased with what we have. I would love to have no comments, but to get comments like that shows me how deeply our auditors are digging into our finances, and it's not a rubber stamp. They are here for weeks on end. We get comments from the folks in the building, "When are they getting out of our conference room?" And the questions are detailed, and there's digging that has to be done to provide support for what we do. So, if there's any other questions, we do need to accept the audit and the corrective action plan that's attached. I kind of described a little bit of what we're gonna do for the corrective action here in this discussion.
I just want to make a comment. Being one of the only 35 districts in the state to do this, that's kudos. So, good to you and your staff for doing it.
Thank you.
Yep.
I thought you were also gonna shout out an award somebody got and failed to mention. Didn't you get it?
That's right.
Like, what are you picking up there about somebody?
The, for the 11th year, our audit was recognized by a national, international organization for the quality of the reporting. So, we're happy to get that.
Yeah, we just need a motion and a second.
Motion and a second to approve the audit?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Genovacy. Dr. Littleston. Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Our motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yes. Those microphones are in and out today. Ghosty. All right, we are going to go ahead and move on to our board's self eval, and want to invite Jesse Adams up to the podium. Good evening.
Jesse, would you feel more comfortable sitting or standing at the podium? It's... We can put you over here. Wherever you feel most... Okay, then by all means.
All right, so, thank you for having me here. Tonight, we're going to talk about... Tonight, we're going to talk about yourself and about your culture of the district. How many of you don't know who I am? All right, let me do it real quick. I'm from the New Jersey School Boards Association. I'm a field representative. I have responsibilities for Burlington County.
Jesse, let me interrupt. I know you want to walk around, but they can't hear you on, on the TV.
I have responsibilities for Burlington County, Mercer County, and half of Camden County. It's about 70 boards of education that I have specific responsibility for. As a field rep, we call ourselves the pointy end of the spear for New Jersey School Boards Association. I have counterparts in my organization, Field Services, who have similar sized territories throughout the state. We're responsible for professional development, consulting, we answer questions, provide training, whatever you need, that's what a field rep is, is here to do. And if you've got a question and I don't have an answer for, I have reach back to the entire organization to get an answer. So it's pretty much, you know, it's usually rare that field reps don't have answers, but like I said, we've got our legal policy, we have the whole organization to reach back to if we need it. You all as part of, as being board members, every district pays their annual dues to New Jersey School Boards Association. New Jersey School Boards Association is your professional organization, just like engineers have an engineering society, accountants have, you know, a society of accountant. For new, for school board members, New Jersey School Boards Association is your professional organization. The membership includes all board members, the BA, and the superintendent as part of the board team. So, um, so we're here to help. I get phone calls, emails from board members, superintendents, and BAs every day. What I do always like to tell folks is that your conversations, even when you reach out to school boards, that's a confidential reach out, that's a confidential conversation. So if I'm talking to one of you, that's, that's confidential. I call it one-way confidential. I'm not going to go out and tell people I've spoken to you, but you're perfectly free to tell whoever you want that you've spoken to me or anyone else at NJSPA. That's how we operate. So if you're looking for some information, I give that information to you. You come to a board meeting and say, hey, I talked to Jesse, I had a question about this and here's the information he gave me. That's perfectly fine. But if you call me, I'm not going to call your superintendent or your board president and say so-and-so called me and asked me this question. That, it doesn't work that way. And it's, and that's the way it works with every staff member at NJSPA. So that's, that's part of that confidential, like I said, we call it one-way confidential. You feel free to call us and ask us any questions you need. Self-evaluation. One, if you were around long enough, you might've known that the board self-evaluation was a mandatory requirement back when CUSAC first started. CUSAC as you see it today is really a lot smaller than what it was when it first rolled out many, many, many years ago. And in the governance section of CUSAC, in addition to your superintendent evaluation, which is required by statute, CUSAC made the self-evaluation mandatory. When they went through the revisioning and skinnying down of CUSAC because it was a, it was a bear to get through, when they reduced the indicators, self-evaluation was taken out of the equation as mandatory. It's viewed as a best practice. And why? Because everybody in the district is required to get an evaluation. Your superintendent by law is required to ensure that every employee in this district receives an annual evaluation. You by law, as the Board of Education, you have the requirement for one employee, that's the superintendent. So everybody in this district gets evaluated by law except the Board of Education. There is no Board of, you know, evaluation for a Board of Education by law. I've had board members challenge me on that and they say, well, we get, we get evaluated every election. I say, okay, I hear you. I was a board member for 22 years before I did this job and I sat on two boards of education. I was legally allowed to because I was, I was on two boards when the law changed and I was grandfathered until I either resigned or lost an election. I never lost an election. I resigned, I resigned when I took this position because you have, you can't work for school boards. So 60 days from the time I took this, my, my last board meeting on each of my two boards occurred. So, so my challenge back was that 22 years, two different boards, it's a lot of elections. And I can guarantee that during all that time, I probably could count on one hand and maybe have a finger or two left, the number of contested elections that I ran. Did that mean they thought we were wonderful? That our board was great? The board members were great? Or did they not want to jump into the fire? Right? So, so my challenge was, is that, you know, when they say we, we get evaluated based on the election, you know, I have an experience that says I don't, I don't think it's, it's the true measure of your success as a board. So the purpose of the self-evaluation is for you to look in the mirror as a board and ask yourself, how are we doing? As the governing body responsible for all the children within our district and our, our responsibility, how are we doing as a governing body? And that's the purpose of the self-evaluation. It allows you to take a look at yourselves, come up with your perspectives, and then have a conversation about it. You know, there's, there's, there may be some things that some folks may not have been aware of, but it's an opportunity to say, how are we doing and how can we improve? That's the real key is it's for continuous improvement as a governing body. Right? So this district has, in my, my time, I've been with New York School Boards now nine years, this district routinely does the self-evaluation. So it's part of your culture. I don't know if you do it every year, but I know you've done it a lot of years in the last nine years. So, and that's important. A lot of districts that do that do it for that exact reason. Look, how are we doing? And then if we do have areas for improvement, it helps shape some of your board goals, which are, board goals are designed to help you improve as a board. So, so you, you all completed your evaluation. You should have, and I believe it's probably electronically in their files, you should have a compiled document, which I call the data document. It's basically everybody's individual inputs compiled into one document. When you pull it, when you go through it, you can see how everybody, where everybody fell on all the different indicators. You can't tell who's who. It's basically an anonymous document. So you can see what everyone's views were on the different indicators, what comments they may have added, and, and so you get a different set of perspectives. So what, what the boards do, there's two ways that a lot of boards use this tool. Some of them will take it and maybe the board president may give it to a committee and say, all right, analyze it and then come back and let's have a board discussion. Or you can ask the field rep as a third party to look at it and come in and tell you what the third party is seeing in your data. So your, your board president has asked me to come in and do that, so we're going to talk tonight about your evaluation. What I handed you each was a summary review. This is, when we come in, this is what we prepare to kind of give you, something to hang on to in addition to your data. Right? So, so I might bounce around a little bit, but what I like to do is I start with the summary, the document I handed you, just to give you a feel for what's in the document so that when you're, when you're mulling through it, you know what's there. One thing I will tell you, you have 11 board team members. The board has nine members and you have a business administrator and superintendent. That's the board team. Our, the self eval set up that superintendents and VAs can participate in the process if the board chooses to ask them to participate. It's not, they're not, it's not mandatory that they participate. And I will tell you, it's probably about 60, 40 of the districts that, that ask superintendent and the, and the BA to participate in those that don't. So it's not mandatory, but your district, you all have 100% of the board team participating in, in the inputting of, on this system. On the, the last three pages, and I'll touch on those and I'll, I'll ask Bob to put them up when I'm ready to talk about them, or a couple of charts to give you just some, some information. In the review, what I do is I look at your data in each of the different governance areas and then I identify what I believe are the strengths. Pretty simple exercise. You all have many, you know, there's several indicators in each of the planning areas and you've all ranked it, ranked them in one way, shape, or form. What I do is I go through each one and I look for where you've evaluated the board. Remember, there's two sections, right? The evaluation of how we're doing as a board and then the section that you rate yourself and how you're doing as an individual board member. So I look at the board section for each of those planning areas and I look for what indicator is, has the highest average. That tells me that's what, that's an indicator that you all agree on very highly that you're doing well in. On the evaluation, NJSPA looks for 3.0 or better. If you've got an average score of 3.0 or better, we think you're a board that's doing good things and working hard to be a good, strong functioning board. If you, if you fall below 3.0 in any area, that's food for thought, right? It's something that you might want to have a conversation about. So as I go through, as I went through each one of the nine areas, and the nine areas for the folks that are listening, planning, policy, student achievement, finance, board operation, board performance, board superintendent relationships, board staff relationships, and board and community, I go through and I look for which of those indicators that you're rating has the highest, highest average. All right? So as you, as, as I go through the strengths, basically in planning, the indicator that had the highest average with a 3.1 was plans and collaboratively sets district and board goals and establishes priorities annually. Under policy, you had, they had an indicator with a 3.6 average, reviews and updates the policy manual regularly as required by NJCUSAC, ensuring that our bylaws, policies, and procedures reflect current regulatory and statutory requirements. Under student achievement, your highest indicator was a 3.5 and it, it was for monitors the effectiveness of our instructional programs by measuring student achievement against state and local standards and other pertinent data. Under finance, you're, the indicator with the highest average was a 3.8 and it was balances the educational needs of students with the impact of budgetary increases. Under board operations, indicator with a 3.7 provides time, funding, and opportunity for orienting and updating our members on local, county, state, and federal levels in accordance with statutory travel regulations. Board performance, you had an indicator with a 3.7. They actually had two indicators with, that had a 3.7. One was works together in an atmosphere of mutual trust and respect. And the second one avoids even the appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest. Board superintendent relationships, you had two indicators that had a 3.8 average. The first one was works with the superintendent in a spirit of mutual trust and confidence. The second was keeps the superintendent informed about community, school issues, and aspirations. Under board staff relationships, you had a 3.8 indicator, provides for public recognition of staff achievement. And then the ninth area, board and community relations, with a 3.5 average, provides opportunity for meaningful parental involvement. So those were the indicators in each one of the nine areas that you all rated the highest. So I consider there's a consensus and an agreement. I consider those are indicators that you're strong on. And that's not to say there weren't others that were above 3.0, but each one of those was the highest indicators that you averaged. So let, let me quickly, I'm going to bounce back to the data document and touch on a couple of things. Actually, let me hold on that. Let me talk about the three charts that are in the report so that you know, understand what those charts represent when you look at them. The first chart is a chart that, that talks, chart one talks about board to value. And Bob's got them on the screen so you can see them in color. Board to value, remember when you went into the tool, the first section that you worked on, you were asked for each of the nine areas of governance, you were asked to give it a value. And based on how you valued that item. So what this chart looks at is it takes what you did, what you as a board, and the results of how you rated, what value you placed against those nine areas of governance, and it compares it against how you rated the board in each of those areas. So the value is the gray, gray bar. That's for, for the board, you all rated each of those areas and you, and you have, as you can see by the gray bars, you rate those areas very highly. And that's good because sometimes I'll see a board rate a couple of them very high and a bunch of them very low. That's not good because to be an effective governing body, you need to be, you need to understand that every one of those areas is important and you need to strive to do the best that you can as a governing body in each of those areas. So this district routinely has placed high values in each of those areas and basically said, we've got to, it's a lot on our plate, but we've got to make it all happen as a board. And then you could see in blue is how you as a board rated yourselves as a Board of Education in each of these areas. So as you could see, for the most part, you know, you, you know, you've got some challenges or some opportunities, I will call them, to, to grow your performance. So that's what chart one represents. Chart two is board to individual. Remember, you have two sections in each of those governance areas. You rate how you believe the board is performing, then you rate yourself as an individual board member. So this compares how you rate the board on average against how you rate yourselves individually on average. And this is a, I call this a pretty good chart. Why? Because I've seen boards with charts that the yellow bars are sky high and the board operation, the board bars are low, are lower. And I, and when I put that chart on the board, on the board, when I have one of those, I ask the board, tell me what you see on this chart. They are, they scratch their head, they're looking at it. And every once in a while, what, someone will say, the board isn't a doing, isn't doing a great job, but I'm great as a board member. And I say, bingo. You're not taking a hard enough look at yourself because the theory is that the team is stronger than any one individual. So if everybody individually believes I'm the best and the board's the problem and that's how they rate, then we've got a problem. You've got to have a conversation to say, you know what? The team as a whole isn't, is, may not be doing a great job. That means the individuals on the team may not be rowing in the same direction. Right? But this is a good, good dispersment. You've got, you know, the board, the board operations are up there individually, you've got some opportunity to grow. So I, so I like this chart as opposed to some that I've seen in 23 that, that have the yellow bars very high. And then the third chart is the year-to-year comparison. Shows 22, the gray shows how you rated the board last year and how you performed. And then 20, 23, the green represents how you rated yourselves this year. So this is an opportunity just to do, do a snapshot look at, hey, how did we do last year? How we, how are we compared to how we, how we felt we operated last year? We used to do this in a three-year window. We've, after, you know, very, a few years back, we realized that, that data isn't good data because board members change over the years and the, the most relevant look is last year to this year, just to give you an indicator, are you going in a positive direction or do you see something going in a negative direction? So that's what those, those three charts help you take, to take a look at. Now I'll go back to the data document and talk about a couple of things. And what I'm going to do is I'll go through each planning area. And what I'm going to do is I'll go through each planning area and all I'm going to do is touch on a couple of nuggets that I saw that I wanted to comment on. So if I look at the planning area, um, we talked about your, your high, your high mark was the 3.1. You've got a couple 2.7s that I, I say are nuggets that you probably, you may want to at some point have a conversation about as a board. Um, and you know, reviews, action plans developed to support goals and then regularly monitors progress towards achieving the district vision, mission and goals, uh, making adjustments as needed. Um, and, and then I, I noted in the, in the, um, um, as a board member section, you had a, there was a 2.8 there, uh, for A, participate fully in the district planning process. And I think what I would say to that, here's what I took when I saw that was that, you know what? We do it, but I don't know if I'm really understanding or any fully engaging and that's okay. But the idea is that over time you're going to understand and become more engaged. Um, the big thing that I saw in this, when I looked at the comments and read through was that, um, lot of good effort to put district goals in place, get them established. You know what you're focusing on for the year, but there was a feel, I got a feel that we need to do a better job of statusing and, and updating ourselves on these on an ongoing basis. When we, we NJSP, when we do goal setting with the district, um, one of the things we tell the, the district is that when you, um, develop your goals, there's the, we call it the what and the how. Some of you probably heard that before. What, what you want, what is needed is determined by the board. That's the goal. What do you want? How is, how does it get accomplished? So the board is responsible for setting and that's part of your planning responsibilities is setting goals, setting district goals, board goals, strategic planning goals. Um, those kinds of things are part of your planning responsibility. Budget planning, superintendent and the, and the, um, BA do the, the lion's share of the work to put the budget together, but you own the budget. That's your budget. You're responsible for the planning of the budget. So they get the work done, but that's your budget. You have to approve it and it reflects your, your educational process for this district through your budget. So, um, but the action plans, we tell, we tell folks all the time, when you, you've set your goal, superintendent's responsible for developing the action plan. We recommend that you get into a business rhythm, whether that's monthly, every other month, once a quarter. We recommend reviewing your action plans to see how you're doing. Remember, district goals are part of the evaluation process for superintendents by statute. You, in theory, you should know by the time you get to March, when you're starting to think about superintendent evaluation time, you should know where you stand on your district goals because you've been getting updated throughout the process. If you're not sure and you don't find out until it's time for the superintendent to give you those updates as part of the objective evidence that she's providing as part of the evaluation process, then it's late in the game. So we recommend every board establish your business rhythm, whatever that is, so that you're periodically getting updated on different elements of your district goals and what's going on with the action. That way you have that information and by the time you get to the end, you already know what your thoughts are as far as the achievement of district goals because you've been kept up to date the entire time. Um, there's a lot of discussion in the comments about, you know, um, um, keeping those, keeping the action plans and goals in the forefront on a routine basis. So that's something that you probably want to talk about as a board. Um, I also, and, and one of the things I saw in a couple of the different comments and section was, was committees. And, and the feeling that committees, um, some folks may not be getting all the information that they think they need to make an informed decision because I'm not on that committee. So it's, and I saw co- committee comments throughout. That's something that you'll see in my recommendation that you might want to think about, looking at your effectiveness of your committees. Committees are great because they divide and conquer, let you get a lot of stuff done. Um, but if they're not effective, some people, I get, over the last several years, we've gotten a lot of, uh, requests to come in and do committee effectiveness training. And first, when I go in, the first thing I ask, I was requested to come in, how many of you are new? Several new board members raised their hands. I said, all right, so how many of you think you're not getting all the information you need and in, in your committee structure and feel like maybe we should go become a committee of the whole because that way everybody gets everything? And I see hands go up. And so I talked to them, I said, well, let's talk about committee process. And I lay out a process and I say, what if boom, 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 boom? And you got a committee report, chairs did this, this is this, and in the end you had everything you needed well in advance of your action night. Would that work? And every one of them says, yeah, that would work, but we don't do it that way. And I said, okay, sounds like the issue isn't the committee structure, it's the committee process. And so I see a lot of comments about committees, which tells me it's probably something that you might want to take some time in 24 to talk about. How effective are your committees and what are you, what are your expectations of committees? So I did see that and wanted to make mention of that. Policy, um, I saw, um, uh, the only thing I really saw in, when I looked at policy, I got a sense that you guys take it very serious, which is great because four functions of a board, when we do roles and responsibilities training, four functions of a board. Policy, planning, oversight and two-way communication. Those come out of the code of ethics. Whether you know it or not, they are in the code of ethics. So policy and, uh, is one of your major responsibilities. It's that what? What do you want as a board? You tell the district through your policy and your superintendent knows this is what the board expects. This is what me and my folks need to execute. I, and I have to determine how I get these policies done. That's how that process works. So you, it looks like you've got a pretty robust policy process. Um, uh, there was, like I said in here, a couple of comments about, about committees and maybe some committees should, should look at some of the, instead of the policy committee looking at financial commit, policies, maybe the finance committee should look at those. We would recommend that's a good way to divide and conquer the policies as well. So that's something to think of. Student achievement. This one I saw throughout. In this, in the backend, you remember in the back, you put three challenges, things that, student achievement, student achievement, student achievement. I always, I've always known Hopewell Valley, big, big district on student achievement. I could see it throughout this. That's a focus area and I'll talk about that, that you really, I want to stay on top of. There were a couple of, a 2.9 and a 2.7 determines the district educational goals with input on data from administration, sets high standards for all students based on multiple assessment and measures. Now those are under 3.0, which means you guys want more rigor to this process as it relates to curriculum. The other thing I noticed too, if you look at the, at the chart, you've got the indicators and then commendable, good, adequate, unsatisfactory, not observed. You remember you write, write that. I look for, if I see a spread, which means a dispersment of the choices, that tells me that those are nuggets we're talking, those are talking. That indicator says this, yet we, we are spread all the way from commendable to unsatisfactory. That mean, it's not all skewed good and commendable. We've got it, we've got a difference of opinions. Those are what I call the nuggets that are opportunities for conversations. So there's a lot of these spreads in student achievement, which means there's a lot of opportunities you all to talk about, about student achievement. There's a lot of discussion in your comments about data, using data, uh, 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 understanding, um, not only just using the state assessments, but what internal assessments are you using? A lot of districts are, are, you know, I will say struggle with understanding that there's more than just the, the state assessment that the, that the students, I mean, the teachers and the staff are ensuring they stay on top of to understand what's going on with the students. It's important that you all understand what those other types of assessments are and use that data as part of your student achievement conversations and discussion on where you want to keep taking this district forward. So that's, those are the kind of things I saw under student achievement, finance. glowing, uh, comments and, and obviously you've got one of the best BAs in the state. So I'm, I'm, and I'm saying that because he is one of the best in the state. You better keep him. Um, uh, good, good ones are hard to come by. Um, uh, the, 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 one of the things that I did see in here was that when you have a great BA and a, and a strong superintendent, you tend to not have to worry about the budget planning, et cetera, but you need to be involved in the budget planning. And what I mean by that is understanding, setting parameters and then understanding what the trade-offs are. You know, if you say, if you give a budget parameter next year that says, you know what? 2% cap, that's our cap. We can all, you know, we can't go above that. Eh, but what happens if we only go 1.5? What happens if we only go one? Those are budget parameters, right? And if you give those parameters, then they will build you budgets and give you the puts and takes. We go to 1.5, here's what you lose. If you go to one, here's what you lose, et cetera, et cetera. Those are things that you should be asking questions about, right? What are, what are the programs that we want to focus on? And if that, if that means adding this program, are we going to risk something else? That's part of your responsibility in the budget planning cycle. But unless you're having that conversation upfront on what are the thoughts of the board, superintendent and BA as far as the next budget and what kind of parameters do you want the BA and the superintendent to be thinking about as they start to put that draft budget together? That's important. I, I call it, um, you don't want to be in the bring me a rock scenario. And I, I saw, I, I call that from my military background. You tell somebody, go get me a rock. They go out, they bring back a rock. You look at the rock and say, it's not big enough. So they run out and they go get you another rock. Bigger, but it's the wrong color. Same thing with the budget. Don't let them go off, develop a budget with no, without having a, a discussion about parameters first. Because if they go off, build a budget, bring it to you and you haven't given it, and all of a sudden you have all these great ideas. They've spent a lot of time putting a budget together with what they believe the right priorities are and now all of a sudden you're throwing curveballs at it. Let's have, discuss the curve, let's, let's discuss the pitching repertoire upfront so that they can come back with a budget that might be able to meet all your puts and takes and desires, but at least they're able to tell you what it means to the students in your district, what you want to do, right? So that's, that's the only thing I saw in the finance. Board operations, um, I saw, um, a lot of, a lot of things about, uh, culture and climate and, um, working together, which was very positive. I saw some stuff about committees and information. Like I said, it popped, committees popped up several times. Um, um, the atmosphere of collaboration, the fact that you, that everybody has a voice and that you respect each other's opinions. You may not agree with them, but everybody gets to speak, get your opinions on the table and then you call the question and you move on. Very, very evident there. Um, I saw that, uh, under the individual, um, ratings, there was a 2.7 where under the indicator attend workshops to increase my effectiveness as a board member. So that tells, that tells me there's an understanding of continuous learning. You expect your students to be continuous learners. You, you, you pay for your staff to be continuous learners, your contracts have tuition reimbursement in them, your individual contracts have the opportunity. What are you doing as lifelong learners to make sure that you're improving in your craft as board member? So I saw that, that, that ended, that 2.7 told me that you all see that and are thinking about that. So how do you continue to grow yourselves? Um, board performance, works together, atmosphere of mutual respect. Um, I think that was very positive and the fact that you guys take your role and your ethics responsibilities very seriously. So I saw that. Board superintendent relationships, um, mutual trust and understanding, mutual respect. Uh, I think, I saw that throughout the comments. I think the, uh, the one thing that ties into the planning piece was, is, is the, um, goals, objectives, action plans. That, that's all directly linked with the superintendent and, and you'll work together in the planning arena. So I saw a comment about, about, uh, more of that and a process that helps you stay on top of, of the goals and the achievement of goals and action plans. Board staff relationships, um, the one big thing, I mean, it was good comments, one notable comment and one notable under the individual section, 2.2 under attend school and community activities and comments about being more visible. It's tough, you know, like I said, you have, you have your day job, but, but, um, trust me, having done this for 22 years, um, it, it is sometimes a struggle to get to as many, um, district activities that you would love to, but it's always important for people to see the board members, take an active interest and attend functions. One of the, I will tell you, one of the things that we struggled with on the board I was on was, was just that. How do we make sure we have at least one of us at every meeting so that people know that we're interested in everything that's going on here? We, we put a board calendar together and every month superintendent made sure all of the activities that were going on in the district were identified on that calendar. And each month, we all signed up to make sure every one of those was covered. And so at least one person was going to attend an event. And so we made sure that, that made sure that we were able to be visible, get out and witness student achievement. Because everything that you do in the district is student achievement. Every ECA, every sporting activity, every academic activity, there, it's all student achievement. So you should be out there witnessing the fruits of what you're trying to do for the students. So just an idea of how you can force yourselves to be more visible. Board and community, um, the one thing you had, there was a 2.9 under the indicators and it was build partnership with the community, business and governmental leaders. Um, and there was a pretty good dispersment of, of, of thoughts on that one. That's a nugget for conversation. You know, um, I know a lot of districts who tried to do more to, you know, to increase the liaison between the community, the township committee, et cetera, et cetera. So it sounds like something that you guys rated it low, another nugget for an opportunity, a board goal maybe to improve community relations and township relations. So something to think of there. So that, those are all of the nine areas. Those are the kind of things I saw in the comments. When I go back to the, the report, um, section two talks about challenges and solutions. I looked at all your comments, looked at all the comments in the, each of the nine areas plus the comments that you gave for the challenges that you, each of you were asked to identify up to three challenges that you see for the district plus other thoughts as far as, uh, uh, potential focus areas. When I looked through all of your data, what I saw were challenges in these four areas. Student achievement, specifically addressing the needs of all students, using multiple data sources, qualitative and quantitative data and growing academic, technical and life skills for your student. That's what, that's what I see, that's what I saw in your comments for student achievement from a planning perspective. District goal, district goals, structured action plan reviews so that you're hearing information throughout the year and budget planning collaboration. Like I said, those parameters upfront and then as you're in your work sessions, you can have conversations about those. And then I saw some comments about the vision and mission, that, that, that there's an effort going on to look at that. And that's important because everything you do should be focused on what your vision and what's your mission. And that's, that's, that's the, uh, the bullseye you're shooting for. Finance and budget, I saw, you know, a lot of folks mentioned that as a challenge. Referendum, referendum coming, changing demographics, growth occurring in the district and just facilities, infrastructure is eating into everybody's and just facilities, infrastructure is eating into everybody's capital projects and budgets. And then the last one I saw was dealt with social emotional wellness. Staff and students, social and emotional wellness, mental and behavioral health, student behavior, student and staff morale. So those were the four things I saw in the information, the comments, and the information you provided as your key challenges as you go into this next board year. Areas of focus that I saw in your comments, as well as things I would recommend, focusing on committee effectiveness, look at, taking a hard look at your committee structure, the effectiveness of it. And what I mean by effectiveness, what's your charter for every, every committee? What is, what's their deliverable, what's their, what are they responsible for? What's the role of the chair? What's the responsibilities of the chair? I will tell you, the chair is a leader, it's a leadership opportunity, it's a leadership position. People think of board leadership, board president, vice president. Every committee chairperson is a board leader. That leader, as a leader, you have a responsibility for ensuring that that committee does the work that matches the charter that this board has put in place. What do you want that committee, each of those committees to, to do and bring back? Chair has a, the chair of a committee is a hard job, if it's done right. Committee chairs should be putting agendas together with the liaison. We recommend those committee meetings should be, the entire board should know when those committee meetings are being held, and what the agenda is for each of those committees. Why? Because I may not be on that committee, but I could see what they're going to be looking at, and I may have a comment or a question that I want to relay to the chair to think of. So you all know, this is what is on the committee, this committee's agenda. You have an opportunity to reach out before that meeting to say, committee chair, I see you're covering X, Y, and Z, I have the following questions on that, or can you introduce this? That's an opportunity. Committee chair, committee meets, stay on task, get the committee work done. That committee chair is responsible for a committee report. That committee report should be as detailed as the board decides that committee report should be. So that, when that committee report gets released and sent to the board secretary for distribution to the full board, you should have all the information, because that committee report should be structured the way you want it structured as a board, to give you all the detailed information you need on what's going on and what that committee is recommending. So if you get that, you know, okay, here's what the committee did, here's, I can see everything that was accomplished, and if I have questions, I contact the board, the chair, to get my questions answered in advance of the action meeting. You do that, you should have done all the homework that you need done as it relates to the committee work. You should feel pretty confident that going into your action meeting, you have enough information to make an informed vote, which is your responsibility as a board member. So you, you gotta collect and do your homework. I always tell board members, you get your packet, I'm assuming you're electronic, so you get your electronic packet for the board meeting. That's only part one of your homework to get ready for your board meeting. So you've got all the backup information, all that documentation, you should have a committee report for every committee of what was done. Between the packet and the committee report, you should be able to reach out to get any questions you have answered, based on your protocols, whether that's finance, you go to the BA, committee, you go to the committee chair, other items, you go to superintendent, whatever your protocol and process is for getting information, you reach out and get your questions answered. We also recommend that when you ask a question, if I ask the BA a question, that answer should go back to the full board. Full board, BA should say, a board member, and you don't have to say who, a board member asked the following question on item X. Here's the information, here's the backup, everybody gets the same information, whether you knew the answer or not, you're going to get the information. That lends to consistency. So you've got your committee notes, you've got your questions answered as it relates to committees, you've got your packet, you've, you've got questions answered, and you think you pretty, feel pretty good about your homework, and you're ready to come to the meeting, and you think you have a good idea on how you're going to vote, you still don't have all the information. You get to the meeting, there's still two more pieces of information that you need. One occurs at public comment. Public comment on action items. Somebody may come up to the podium and say something, give you a comment about something on the agenda that you hadn't thought about. That's information you need to hear. Now you're, now you're ready for one more piece of information to make your informed vote. That's when motion, second, discussion. That's the time to listen to each other. And someone may say something on the board that may change your perspective and may change the way you are going to vote. Once you get to the discussion point, you now, if you've done your homework, you now have all the information that you need to do your job as a board member, which is make an informed decision and informed vote. So that's committee effectiveness, understanding that, and knowing how to set your processes up, your bylaws up, so that all those kinds of things occur, and you hold each other accountable, you hold the chairs accountable to making that happen will go a long way to eliminating comments about committees, not necessarily because I'm not on the committee, I may not be getting all the information. You own that process, so you can fix that process. Visibility, board team visibility, you talked about that, there's ways that you can get yourselves out. And you know, I said, the whole board doesn't need to be there, but if one board member's there. And don't be afraid to make, make yourselves known that you're there and you're a board member. Sometimes you don't want to be, but if you go to a function, it's always nice if the principals introducing a concert or something, and a board members in the audience mention the board, ask to be just identified so you can wave to the folks so that they know, so that your stakeholders, your community know, you all are board members, and you're, you have a vested interest in the student achievement of, of the children in this district. Data-informed decision-making, a lot about, a lot of comments in the, in the last part, as well as throughout, about data, 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 using data. You want to make sure you're understanding what data can do for you to make informed decisions using data. And then the comment about continuing to grow yourself as a board member, ongoing individual board member professional development, as well as full board professional development. National school boards, a lighthouse study says that boards that are effective, they do professional growth together. That's part of that training and growing together. You hear the message together, you have that dialogue, and you grow together. So those, that's my review of your data, and that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. So, comments? Like I said, these are nuggets. Look through these, you may see different things. And how do I, how do I propose you use them? You go through a board meeting, you're doing your business, and looks like a good evening, before you close, take a 10, 15, 20-minute discussion, pick one of the nuggets where there seemed to be a dispersment of opinion. You know, this indicator says, we do X, Y, and Z, but we had a difference of opinion. Let's talk about that for 15, 20 minutes, see, let's see what, get a perspective. That's how you continue to improve yourself as a company. Questions, comments?
Well, thank you, first and foremost. Anyone have any questions for Jesse?
I have. Well, first of all, just thank you so much. Yeah, thank you so much, this was so thorough, and I just think incredibly helpful for us moving forward. I'm just curious if you have any thoughts or suggestions about how boards have turned this type of feedback into an action plan? So absolutely acknowledge the value of discussing, but you brought up so many great strategies, I thought, oh, that would be fantastic. So how, how are boards taking this and turning it into a set of to-dos that they can institutionalize?
What we, what we try to do is we tell, tell folks that this, you set your district goals focused on student achievement, basically. Now, everything you do with your district goals, what are we doing for the kids in this district? Board goals are your goals. And the purpose of board, there's four types of goals in a district. District goals, focused on everything, and everybody is responsible for achieving district goals. One person by law and statute is being held accountable, that's the superintendent. But everybody from the bottom employee to the top of the food chain, which is the Board of Education, you are all responsible for achieving district goals, right? Board goals belong to the board. They're focused on improving yourselves as a governing body. And then there's merit goals, which are in, in law for superintendents. And then there's superintendent personal goals, which are things that come out of the evaluation, typically under the leadership areas, the sixth areas. So those are the four types of goals. Board goals, we tell boards to use this to help inform your board goals. Look for those areas that you probably need to think about focusing on, and then have a conversation as a board and set yourselves one or two meaningful board goals that are going to help you improve your, you can't boil the ocean. So you got to take it one pot at a time, right? So take one pot, one item, and build a board goal around that for this next board year. One or two. We always say no more than two, because this is not your full-time job, right? Superintendent, three, four district goals, that's all part of the process. Her, her and her staff have a responsibility to achieve those goals, that's all part of that, their education. For you as board members, I had a board that said, we got so much stuff, we're going to build like 10 goals. And I'm like, and at the end of the year, you're going to have maybe one of them complete, because you don't do this 24/7, right? So one or two meaningful improvement goals to establish those. Then, just as the superintendent is responsible for taking district goals and creating an action plan, the board owns the action plan for your goals. So what I would do is have that conversation, come to a consensus of what are our two board goals going to be for this next year? And then I would ask the president to do, set an ad hoc committee, three to four members who will go off and take the two goals and come back with a potential action plan. That action plan will then be reviewed by the full board, or it's modified, change, whatever you need to, but in the end, you'll come to an agreement, this is, these are our two goals for this year, and here's the action plan that we are going to execute to get there. And then, remember I said earlier in the planning, goals, business rhythm to update the board on district goals on a periodic basis? I recommend superintendent's doing an update to business goal, I mean, to district goals on, in, in February, the board that same evening should do an update on our action plans for the goals that we're, we're doing. Guess what that does? Makes you accountable for your goals and your action plans, and it puts, it shows everybody else, they're in this, they, they set targets, and they hold themselves accountable to hit those targets as well. So you walk the talk, right? You don't have just the expectation. We, we put expectations on ourselves, and we work hard to improve ourselves. So that's, that's how I would recommend you go about, about doing that. There's no, a market on ideas, but, but that, that ad hoc committee can then brainstorm, reach out to other districts to see if other board members have, and we now have the connections where you can reach out, see if anybody's working on this area, and have you, do you have any ideas? And then you come back with an action plan that hopefully your teammates will say, we like this, we're going to live up to it. And in that action plan, an action plan has action, resources, and RI, responsible individuals, who's, who's the belly button that owns each one of these action items and is going to get it done, and the timeline. By when, what's the timeline for the milestones to get it done? If you put the fidelity in, hold yourselves accountable, you'll make the incremental improvement.
Excellent advice. I was just going to suggest one thing, like, you know, I think when we get to the beginning of the year, historically, like, you're starting to think about budget and stuff, but you do have that opportunity of the reorg meeting, which tends to be relatively short. You elect the president, the president and vice president, you don't have committees yet. Probably a good opportunity to talk about just that operations communication.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's great.
And, and I commend you on the fact that a lot of districts have shifted. Historically, there were pretty much two times of the year that people did self-evaluations. Some would do them at the same time that superintendent evaluation was being done, so they built their plan around the fiscal, school year, fiscal year. Others do it this time of the year. The difference, the board, the board year is a different year than the school cap and the fiscal year. So boards that do it now want the existing board that lived through this year to tell us how we did. And then you build your goals to improve for the next board year. In the old, in those that do it in the summertime, so to speak, basically, you've got some folks who are brand new, six, half of the year they weren't involved. And so sometimes they, well, I can't really do this, I don't have an input. And, and I, we always feel there's less fidelity in that, whereas right now, the board that lived through the year, you all have views and opinions, and it works out to be a good opportunity to capture that, and then plan on how we improve for the next year.
Thank you so much.
Right? Thank you, guys.
Take care.
So we want to thank Mr. Adams. He will be working with us on our strategic plan. So if you liked what he did tonight, there will be an email going out to the whole community. We need about 50 to 60 people, right, Mr. Adams, to work on. The reason why we got a 3.1 is because we have not had a strategic plan in years, and we really do need to build that strategic plan for the next five years. He's going to probably have us chunk that. So that the board can set meaningful goals for myself, for yourself, and for the community. So we're looking for members to be involved.
Yes, definitely, you know, getting those committed folks is important. It hasn't been announced, so I wanted to tell you, since you mentioned that, I will be retiring.
What?
Effective, effective, one January. I'm, I'm meeting with the director tomorrow, and they will be assigning somebody to shepherd you through that plan. Trust me, trust me. The field reps are all great, so whoever, and I will be making sure before I leave that they have everything that they need to make sure your plan is a success, so.
Another retirement, well deserved, sir.
I was going to make a brief comment, but congratulations, and I wanted to thank you, I, I was actually taking notes with a couple of actionable things, and it's always good. I, when somebody does a presentation like that, I feel like if I can walk away with specific actionable items. So Anita, I wanted to kind of second Adam's comment, I, I think we need to find the time when we can, I'm not sure, but this is a, the right time for me to kind of lay my, my thoughts right, because then if everybody does it, we'll go off on attention. We should find the time for, for all of us to kind of go through that and talk through a couple of things that Jesse brought up.
Absolutely. Yeah. We, we.
And you'll get a digital copy of the report, and he'll, he'll get back to you.
Yeah. So thank, thank you again, Mr. Jesse Adams, you will be missed, and, but truly, truly thank you for contributing over the years and being, you've added so much value. So just to quickly wrap that up, I think great comments from both Alex and Adam, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Littleston, for your question. I thought that was very insightful. So we will make sure in, in the planning process and agenda setting that we find not only a rhythm to those goal settings, but also really resetting how we kick off committees each year. I think that we've had a unique period where we've had turn, a lot of, almost half the board turned over last year, so I think there's that element as well, which, you know, was, it's not insignificant, and there's putting a process in place so that everybody knows the charter for each committee and anybody who is maybe stepping into a committee chair role for the first time just kind of knows how to, to navigate that. And having continuity, I mean, I think we all have great strengths, given our personal, private work outside of public work, but certainly bringing continuity between committees. That's all very, very insightful, and no question, we'll put those structures in place next year as we move through. Okay, moving on, just checking in on old business, any old business items? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to actually accept the selfie valve. So I need a first and a second. All in favor of approving?
Aye.
Any abstaining or opposing? Selfie valve accepted. Now, moving on to any old business. Okay, seeing none, we will go on to our first open public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality, and in response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. Thank you, Adam. That was Alex. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administrator. Just again, request that if you are speaking, please sign in at the podium. Public comments now open, and do you want to give your standard?
Hi, my name's Aileen Madicoli. I live in Hopewell Township, and I am here tonight as a parent of a sixth grade student in Timberlane on the Cyclone team. So following Mrs. Pegram's appointment to VP in October, the principal sent an email that stating that another certified math teacher with years of experience at Timberlane, who was familiar with the sixth grade curriculum, would be taking over for Mrs. Pegram. Just about two weeks later, he again emailed that that instructor took a leave of absence, and a long-term substitute teacher was now taking over the instruction of the math classes for the Cyclone team as the search for a permanent replacement continues. During the transition period, the children were taught a unit on fraction operations by multiple substitute teachers, and the assessment was administered and graded by a teacher who had not taught the lessons. When the results were returned two weeks after taking the test, they revealed a concerning average score of 72, with only two children scoring an A, while many others received a failing grade. I reached out to the principal about the test results because I was concerned that many children in the class may not have grasped these important concepts. Additionally, with such poor scores, I worried about the damage done to our students' math confidence and self-esteem. He assured me that they were equally concerned about the results, and they were taking steps to ensure that the students learned this material. So while I support Mrs. Pegram's well-deserved appointment to vice principal, I question the urgency to fill the vice principal position before hiring a qualified, permanent replacement teacher. Clearly, this decision has not been beneficial to many students on the Cyclone team. I am here tonight because I have the following questions. Could the effective date of Mrs. Pegram's appointment have been delayed until a suitable permanent replacement was found? Doing so may have ensured a more seamless transition and maintained the quality of our children's education. Once the interim teacher went on leave, could Mrs. Pegram's class periods have been covered by other certified math teachers from the middle school or even the high school on a class-by-class basis? Alternatively, if coverage was not available for every period, could Mrs. Pegram return to the classroom to cover some class periods in a hybrid teacher VP role? Also, what is the plan for the Cyclone team if a permanent replacement teacher is not found, or if the previous interim teacher does not return from leave this year? Will the long-term substitute teacher currently leading the classes remain in that position? I understand the search. In the meantime, I want to be assured all the students on the Cyclone team are getting a high-quality education and not falling behind their peers. I urge you to consider the broader implications for students' learning when making personal decisions.
Hello, my name is Matt Carcel. I live in Hopewell Township. I am non-binary, and my pronouns are they/them, and I'm the student advisor of Spectrum, CHS' Gender and Sexuality Alliance, and I'm here today on behalf of those members. There are currently 280 undefeated anti-LGBTQ bills circling through the U.S. government. 233 of them specifically target LGBTQ youth in schools. 34 of those have been passed into law, making schools less safe for LGBTQ students. Spectrum works to create a safe, affirming space for CHS' LGBTQ students and provides staff and students with opportunities to learn about and support this community. Gender and sexuality alliances are important to the community as a whole. They offer safe spaces for students for whom it may not be safe to be out at home, and they promote a more positive school environment overall. According to GLSEN, the Gay Straight Education Network, students are 18% less likely to hear bias-based and derogatory language when their school has a GSA, and this number goes up when the community supports the GSA as a whole in all aspects of school life. The Trevor Project says that a majority of LGBTQ youth report having poor mental health due to harmful environments and legislation, but that affirming school environments can reduce suicidal ideation by nearly 40%. It is so important that students see representation of themselves in the classroom in various ways, and last summer's assigned reading, Clap When You Land, by Elizabeth Acevedo, was a wonderful example of this. The novel about two half-sisters who come to know each other through the death of their father was my favorite summer reading book that I've read thus far, but several people have expressed discontent with it because one of the sisters has a girlfriend. I thought their relationship was depicted beautifully, and I applaud the district's choice to have students read this. This aspect of her identity was not made to be a big deal, nor was it the only aspect, or the only important aspect of who she was, who she is, two things important to inclusive education. During the 2021-22 school year, two of CHS' LGBTQ student groups had several meetings with teachers and administrators to discuss the current state of content inclusion across curricula, as well as the general experience of LGBTQ students in the high school. In these meetings, it was made clear that most LGBTQ students do not see themselves reflected in what they are learning in class, and that changes should be made to the curriculum to both improve inclusivity, but also open classrooms to more positive discussions about the LGBTQ community. We also discussed that content should be consistent across classes of the same subject, regardless of who is teaching and the identities of students in that classroom. GLSEN also says that students who see themselves represented in what they're learning in school report feeling safer and having higher levels of self-esteem and GPA. Spectrum would like to continue having an advisory position in the resolution of these issues to continue to work towards more inclusive curriculums that engage and include all students we deserve to be taught about in schools. I would also like to thank Ms. McGrath, the staff advisor of Spectrum, for her support and for always working to make this school a better environment.
Okay. So I'm here on a more fun topic. I'm here for Adam Sawicki. I missed the beginning, but you guys are so lucky to have had Adam. I'm just going to point that out right now. As I look across this room, I know that I recognize the staff. I don't recognize most of the, although some, but I don't recognize most of the board members because all of you are in your first term. Adam is in his fourth term? Holy smokes. I, I just cannot say, and first of all, Lisa Wolf, Hopewell Township.
Nobody doesn't know you in all of Hopewell Township.
I've brought with me Lee Peterson.
Also Hopewell Township.
Who was the board vice president with me when I was board president.
Ten years.
So back in the day when we were on the board, people actually did re-up each year, and the average amount of time the, of the board trustees were on the board was like usually two or three terms. But Adam is probably the smartest board member that I ever worked with, and I will point out after listening to the board's self-review, that when I joined the board, there was no policy committee. We formed a policy committee. We put that together because we prioritized it, and I am not surprised at all to hear that you're doing well on policy, because I'm sure that Adam is now chairing that committee, and he, he knows how to do project management and keep everything together. So I wanted to come out because I thought it was so important to say that you've done a great job, you have served your community well, and you were definitely, in my, in our decade of experience, the strongest board member we've worked with.
And I just want to add, until I had been on the board, I had never experienced, you know, being in a political kind of arena, and it was not at all what I expected. And I, I do highly recommend a lot of people do it, because you don't understand how it works. Like, I didn't understand how school boards and school budgeting worked until I did it. And Adam was a great partner. We had a really, we had a good group when we were on the board, and I think it's, it's continued, and obviously, the way the school district, you know, performs, you can see that. But I think a lot of that comes down to the board, the dedication, and, and it's a sacrifice. And it was great to hear Bob, I think Adam had mentioned it, you know, thank Michelle and the family for it, because it's a lot. I mean, getting my Monday nights back after not having them for 10 years was the strangest thing to be home on a Monday night. I couldn't even imagine. But just, I wanted to also appreciate my, appreciate, or give you my appreciation, Adam, for all of your years of service. You will be greatly missed.
Thank you.
That's okay, we're good. I used to be the wielder, that was my job for years. That's right, I probably did, yeah, sorry.
I do remember Alex coming up.
That's right.
Cut him off, get the cane.
So anyway.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
You guys are lucky to have him. Do not underestimate the value of institutional knowledge. And I'm stopped.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Lisa.
Any other public comments? Okay, with that, thank you for both doing that. That's an awesome cap.
Yes. And for those of you who don't know Lisa and Lee, yes, they were on the board, they put in a huge amount of service, and I couldn't hope to do for the district what they did. So, so keep.
You are the air.
Outstanding. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Okay, with that said, I do want to give Dr. Therese an opportunity to respond, and I know I have at least one comment. Would you like to go first?
I just wanted to call us in while calling us out. We are following them, not her. So just when someone gives you their pronouns, it's really important to use them. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Genefasi. I just wanted to answer the question that Ms. Madicoli gave us, and yes, we did have large plans of mice and men. We had plans all set up before Ms. Pegram transitioned, with a teacher, a qualified teacher lined up to go into that spot. Life happens. We're hopeful, so that we're going to correct that very, very soon. So, you know, we, it's hard to find qualified math teachers. Pulling other teachers from other places doesn't work because they, they have preps, they have schedules that are full. So we are working very hard and diligently to correct this problem. But again, we had all that planned and lined up before we made these transitions in the leadership, I mean, in the positions, and then something happened. So we apologize to the community for that, but these things do happen, but HR is working very hard to try to make sure that we correct this as soon as possible. So we'll keep you posted, and we are working to try to support those students along the way. And by the way, I've been in all the math classes, none of them can do fractions, so tell them, "Don't panic." So we're working on that, too. There seems to be big gaps in fractions since COVID, but we are working on that. So thank you. We do appreciate your comments and your questions.
Any other? We're all good. And I just wanted to make an observation. I, of interest is that with our board self-evaluate, with the items that we've talked about going into the school year, and more specifically about the achievement conversation we've been having, there is, there is a strong continuity in, in how we rated ourselves and how the gaps that we see in our students, and what I can say about that is that's a good thing. That's a good thing that our perceived gaps are aligned with what we're seeing in our students, because that means we're, we're focused on the right thing. So I'm reassured, not of the gaps, but that we will solve those gaps because our heads are in the right direction. With that said, are going, we're going to close public comment now and move on, and I need a first and a second to approve the consent agenda items on. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Consent agenda items passed, and we will move on. Well, we will give, we'll hop over finance. Ooh, right on cue. Oh, Alex, Alex.
Alex, I was going to give out the floor. I'm going to find out. We need to go early, so we want to ask.
Did you prep him for that?
No, I didn't. The sad thing was Alex was taking notes. I was like, he, he completely put the, set me up for this. But, no, it's okay. I think, I think I can. I, you know, obviously, we focused upon the audit report. I think most of the key items came out. Again, I'd just like to recognize Bob and his team for, you know, their continued recognition there. You know, I think beyond what we discussed here, the one thing I wound up asking Bob about was, you saw how we were doing, we got to see some of the details, a little bit more granular in terms of some of our, where we fell expense-wise last year. So one was just requesting an update with regard to how we're doing on our healthcare expenses, and the good news is that Bob basically mentioned that we are now set more, what we budgeted last year is more in alignment with what we're spending. It's in better alignment, so we're just about where we're supposed to be. So that was good news. Beyond that, I don't think we had anything that was not previously discussed.
Our one, we need to approve acceptance of donation under finance. So first and second, to accept the donation of $4,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay.
We are receiving a total of $4,000 through the Princeton Area Community Foundation, $2,000 to the girls' basketball program, and $2,000 to the boys' soccer program. The donor wanted to remain anonymous, but his children had gone through each of those programs and found those programs to be very influential on their children's experiences here and also in college. So they wanted to make that anonymous donation.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, moving on to personnel. We have a number of items and I just need to do a first and second to accept the personnel items.
Motion.
Go ahead. Good evening. So Personnel met directly before this meeting. We discussed the retirement of two staff members. First is Carmen Wilson. She's been a special education teacher in our district since 2003. Ms. Wilson has worked at the middle school, Bear Tavern, and Tollgate. She's been with the district for 20 years. So we're, congratulations to Ms. Wilson on her retirement. And then in addition, Daniel Stires, who's a bus driver, he's been with the district since 2010. So those two retirements. We did have a few resignations of paraprofessionals, but the good news is they're staying with us and they're taking over as teacher positions. So we're very happy to be hiring from within our paraprofessional pool. We have some major positions that are being filled with our payroll account and health benefits, and then the Senior Manager of Information Systems. So we're happy to have people moving into those roles. You'll also see a few changes to stipends or class assignments, so an increase or decrease in assignments. So you'll see some of that on the Personnel Agenda as well, including some additional paraprofessional substitutes, volunteers, and substitutes in other positions that we need. The big thing that we discussed during Personnel was the per diem rate. Things have changed with the state since we updated over the summer. They have changed our per diem from what we thought it was $15 an hour to $15.13 an hour in the last few months. So we need to adjust our per diem for that. And then we had a large discussion on the Performing Arts Center Manager. That position's stipend has not changed in many years. And so the discussion of what was taking place in other districts and what we wanted to do with that position moving forward. So that's what we discussed. Thank you. Any questions before we approve the items? Okay?
Dr. Liliston. Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson. Dr. Genovasi. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Ed Programs?
Hi, we met last, last week on December 4th. And we had Ms. McGlorry, a physics teacher at the high school, come and present. She is a doctoral candidate at Montclair State. And she wanted to get her, wanted to utilize some, do a student research project for part of her doctoral program on building perseverance through movement. The program would, or the study would, is already IRB approved and the committee was in favor of that as long as she came back and gave her results in the future. Ms. Riley came back. She had presented at Ed Program in October with some suggested changes for course eligibility and waivers. And so the committee had asked that she return to just review the, the language that she was going to be using in the program of studies, which comes out in January. And then finally, Ms. Crandall was a phys, who is also a physics teacher at the high school, came to present with Mr. Wilthing about changing our physics offerings at the high school. So we are going to be moving forward with eliminating AP Physics 1 and bringing back Honors Physics. This was made after changes to the AP Physics 1 curriculum that will go in effect next year by College Board. And so we felt that through a conversation with the other physics teachers and looking, you know, at the student enrollment, that this was the, the best move to make.
And just, those are a couple of really critical points is the, the reason, the reason my takeaway for the physics going, removing one for the other is that it actually gives those students that need to be prepared for the test, information that they're not currently getting. There's a couple of points that they don't go deep enough, right? So I think that I just wanted to underscore that, that we're giving them more, not taking away something.
We still have in place AP Physics C, which is a more of a calculus-based physics. So that, that was why, part of the conversation with the committee.
Well, and it's a, I mean, so, so my viewpoint on it, right? From a point of view of students who want to go into STEM majors in college, they need to have that Physics C. No college that I'm aware of will give you useful credit for physics without calculus for STEM major. Right? From a point, and on the, so it's not a really useful course in that sense. On the other hand, because we don't have an honors course, we're kind of putting kids into a position where you either take regular college grad or you have to jump straight into an AP course with additional pressures and stuff. So I, I actually feel that that's the right thing to do is use an honors course. Like I said, I, I am sure there are some students for whom an AP Physics 1 credit would be useful, but for the majority, it's not. And as was discussed during the meeting, the kids that do want to take that AP Physics 1 AP exam will be pretty well prepared by taking the honors course. It's a very, very similar curriculum. They'll just have to do a little bit of self-study for the exam.
I could, if I could comment, I, I think that's a great decision because that way you're setting up the instruction more geared toward the whole year instruction as opposed to preparing for an exam in April and May. The other thing is that exam is very difficult. Historically, the scores on that have been quite low compared to other APs. So if anything, to me, for a lot of kids, that can be their first experience in an AP class and that, put in all that work and then have that be the result? Yeah. I think that's a very good decision.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that.
Risk of sounding a little bit tangential here. You made a comment about a research study being approved within the committee. I think it was, it was a teacher who was a physics teacher and wanted to involve their students in a research project. Can you just walk through what our process is for approving research projects that involve the students in our district?
Sure. So usually it is through, back through some university because we, they have to be IRB approved. So once, what we've done in the past is the, the teacher will come and speak with myself or the principal, and then they put together a presentation and a proposal of what they will be researching to the committee.
And then who has the final approval? Is it the committee? So once they say, yep, we're okay with this, then it's approved?
That's what we've done.
Okay.
Historically, yep.
Thanks for the clarification.
And, and I thought this one was particularly interesting, right? Given our, again, our conversation about academics and trying to affect math, math knowledge and scores. And so it, one of it, one of the ideas is getting people up and, the students up and moving when they have a, kind of confront a problem that they can't break through. So it's just trying different ways to work with perseverance, to, to train kids to persevere through a problem and having it taught in, in this case, in the science math arena, but hoping that it will be a positive study that can inform other ways in which we help kids. You know, it's SEL. Another application of SEL. I thought it was pretty cool.
But historically, since I've been in the district for 11 years, it's always gone, those studies have always gone through Education Program Committee because they are looking specifically at our programs or our students or something to that effect. So all of those have always gone through EdCon. But that's something the Board can discuss as well.
Yeah. And, and I just, I thought there was another question about maybe parents approving and all of that. That definitely is part of the process of approving their participation. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Awesome. We will move on then. There's always one thing to the page. I always.
Community Relations.
Community Relations. Yes, thank you. Community Relations and, and SEL.
And SEL, yes. I'm going to do Community Relations and then I'll let, it's kind enough to do SEL. So in Community Relations, we talked about our different committees. The Drug and Alcohol Committee met on December 6th. They have been talking about what our students are learning at different grade levels, where the gaps are, and how we might support them better in those things. The DEI Committee is actually meeting this Thursday, the 14th. And we had a conversation about celebrating the holidays. That's not what they're going to discuss in the meeting, but we had a conversation about that. And there are lovely posters printed throughout all of our buildings. So thank you, all of the people who helped to do that. Really looking at all of the diverse holidays that are during this period and so that our students can learn about that diversity. And then we talked about, boy, my handwriting is horrible. The superintendent coffee and chats were also discussed and those coming up. And then we talked, we had a conversation just about the challenges happening throughout the district and how we can give student voice on helping us find solutions. There was a great coffee and chat around some of the behavioral issues that we're not only seeing in the district, but nationally that we're seeing. And so how can we come together as a community and really talk about what we can do and make sure that our community and our students are really given a voice in that? And that was our Community Relations.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
There is supposed to be an alcohol and substance abuse committee going on that we last time reported drug prevention in the SCL. Is that, or is that separate?
You, you have your Drug and Alcohol Committee, yeah.
Yeah. So that was my first point.
I missed it. My bad.
They just had a meeting on December 6th.
Okay.
Yeah.
And.
I can, yes. So.
When are we expecting kind of a, a report out from them?
When would you like a report out? A more in-depth report, when would you like it? Right now?
Well, well, I mean, a report out, like, when do we expect them to conclude the work and come back with some recommendations?
I think the work's going to be ongoing, but what we did this, the committee asked for sort of an audit of all of the, all the curriculum we're teaching on drug and alcohol prevention from K to 12.
Okay.
So Heidi Kami and I worked with Vicki and our supervisors, and we did a complete audit from all the grades with the checklist, which we certainly can share out with you as well, of where the gaps are. And there were a lot at the elementary level of where we need to do work. And then Heidi also shared, you know, the work that we've done with Search Institute, the work that she continues to do at the district. I can share all of those with you all as well, but the committee can come back and give some feedback on.
So, so let me get to a very specific question. We have a policy that we were going to review, and Principal Riley has asked us to review on the randomized drug testing that is a particular concern of mine. We kind of pushed that review off so that the Drug and Alcohol Committee has a chance to, to kind of weigh in on it and consider it and come back with some recommendations. So.
Do you want us to do that for our next agenda item? I thought that we wanted something larger.
I would love to.
Okay.
To get, if the Drug and Alcohol Committee has done their work on that, I would love to get a report out from them on that specific topic.
So we'll talk, but I thought that you wanted a larger forum than just that one committee to talk about that, but we can.
Well, 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 ultimately, I'd like us to get to the point where we consider that policy because I'd like us to do a serious review of that policy. And we've had Principal Riley basically say that that policy as it stands now is creating more trouble than it's worth.
No, I hear you. So we can, we can put that as agenda item, but I would add that we probably need to open that up to some sort of larger communication with the.
Right, that's fine. I just want to make sure that that's been.
That we don't lose sight.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, because that was, because the last time we talked about it, the larger communication was going to be the Drug and Alcohol.
Yes. So we can, we'll definitely put that on.
Okay.
What we just covered.
Okay. But, yeah, and.
Which, which could.
Not minimize the importance of it, right? But actually, what I was trying to get is that, is that specific policy that's been on my radar for a little while. Thank you.
We'll get there, too. Thank you for the reminder.
And I, and I just think that the ultimate question in terms of timing is whether the DEI commit, I mean, the, sorry, the Drug and Alcohol Committee has had an opportunity to give, do their research and give feedback as, as a community before we leap into policy on our side.
Already kind of adjusted the policy, but we do need to do a deeper, deeper dive whether or not we're going to go. I think we did. We kind of cleared up the language on it and we did some adjustments to the policy early on in the year. But elimination is something.
It was more related to the mechanics of.
Right.
All right, moving on to SEL.
So we discussed the Day of Giving, which was November 17th. I did a little recap that all six buildings were engaged in various SEL activities that our SEL committee, that consists of teachers and staff recommended. It was a great success. Each building shared multiple activities that the kids were engaged in. We also discussed the evaluation of how we're going to evaluate Character Strong and overall SEL programming. Dr. Liliston is graciously reaching out to some local universities to, we're contemplating using a, and accessing a PhD candidate for this type of data collection. And tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, Samantha Awadala is presenting her first parent university presentation on anxiety, where she will discuss how anxiety may present in youth and explore how you as a parent or guardian can support youth with their anxiety experiences. As the topic of anxiety will be approached as a common human experience, the webinar is for parents of all youth. Considerations for anxiety disorders will also be discussed.
Call it broken.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that it's, I, I'm really glad to hear that we're looking for evidence to evaluate the impact of the Character Strong curriculum. I think that also goes back to the point made in the report that we want to leverage more data, both quantitative and qualitative data, to look at the efficacy of intervention programs and, and new experience that we bring to our students. So I think that's. So I think that's, that's a great addition to this continuous effort. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on to climate action.
Okay, unfortunately, I don't have anything new to report this month because we did not have a meeting last month. Supposed to be having one this month, but we're continuing the work into next year. The focus areas that we still have to address relate to energy and facilities. So if anything, having that in the near term will be good because hopefully there are some things there that can influence our decision making in regard to facilities.
Awesome. Any questions or comments? Okay.
Okay, policy.
Okay, wait a minute. This is his last committee report. Just going to point it out.
Ready to go. And I don't have a first reading because we don't burden the new board. So start fresh in 2024. So can I have a motion to move the policies and regulations up for second reading?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, very straightforward. We've got six up. Policy 5305, health services personnel. Policy and regulation 5308, student health records. Policy and regulation 5310, health services. And policy 7440, school district security. These were primarily driven by state code updates, especially the health record ones. The district security again was done that way, but it helps put in, play some specifics in terms of interactions with students, what security is actually able to do on the board in New Jersey. So we've been through first reading with these, no new comments since that time. So committees recommending these be adopted for second reading.
Awesome.
I'm gonna, but it's not a question. This is my opportunity to say, Adam, that I've just been amazed both at your depth of understanding of policies, but also when you come to the meetings, when you present and explain what the policy committee has done. And this year I have not been on the policy committee. It's been really appreciative because you kind of, you manage to select important things and then just go through all of them in a very, very organized and methodical fashion. Policies are business. So to have somebody be able to kind of clarify it is very, very much appreciated.
Thank you very much. That's very kind. And I will say this. Compared to some prior years, the overall amount of feedback and questions the committee has gotten has been excellent. So I appreciate all the work and I'll say aloud, she's, she's very good. She reads the policies very thoroughly. So thank you very much.
Here, here.
Might have been referenced earlier.
May or may not have. Big shoes to big shoes. Roll call please.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson. Dr. Genovasi. Dr. Lilyston. Dr. Lou.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, are we already? All right. Need a motion in a second to accept the calendars for December and January. That's December 2023, in case you were wondering, and January 2024. We are here. First and the second? Okay. All in favor? Oh, we, sorry. I always do that. Got to set.
The calendar we're really approving is for the organization meeting on January 3rd. What we typically do at this time of year is wait until you all elect the president and vice president, and they establish the committees, and then we kind of meet. We set meetings outside the board meeting since we don't know who's going to be on what and their schedule. So all we're approving tonight is the organization meeting on January 3rd.
That's easy. All right, so January 3rd. Yeah.
Well, it's funny that you ask. What's, typically it's been seven, but we were experimenting with earlier meetings for this one. How does, you know, what's the take of the board? Is six doable?
So I will just make one comment. Should the board decide to use that opportunity for a late holiday party, which we unfortunately had to postpone, six would be a better time.
But we're looking, I guess we're looking more onto the future. You know, how does the board feel about starting at six for all meetings going forward? Or is it, is it not working?
My only trepidation is, does that prohibit people from getting here with commutes to work from work, so on and so forth?
6:30?
And is the idea to still have about a two-hour meeting or we want an earlier meeting that ends around the same time?
That's a great question.
It just got, sometimes at this, this past year, they were going later. And the later it got, it, you know, you folks start, they're tired. I mean, you guys have worked a full day.
Right.
Staff is working.
6:30 definitely works a little bit better for me.
I missed.
All right, well, I guess for.
No, no, it's Wednesday just because that meeting has to happen during the first week. We couldn't wait till the following Monday. Then we'll still be Mondays, and we'll just set the meetings for 6:30 going forward. Okay, so it'll be January, January 3rd at 6:30.
And will there be a public comment session as well?
Always.
They'll have to, but there's no act, there's really no action that night except for the organizational items and the swearing in of board members. We don't really have, we won't have a bills list. We won't have any of that.
Okay.
We'll, we'll explain in the green notes. I'll put a blurb in the green notes explaining what we actually do at organization.
All in favor? January 3rd, 6:30?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, 6:30, January 3rd. Thank you. Any new business items?
There was something that came up, I forgot to mention on the last board meeting, around the homeschooling and them participating in sports activities. If I understand correctly, the, the decision at committee was around not adjusting that policy for the time being. I think, I would hope that maybe we have a second discussion about that on a more holistic level and just to have a deeper dialogue about it at some point.
Yes, so we did discuss it during policy. We looked, dug into and we invited our Director of Athletics, and he was charged with researching the other districts that did this. What the district is required to do is to affirm and verify and also house, so the credit review of the student. So we would own and put into our student management system and affirm that the student is getting an education that we don't have any control over. Parents don't have to prove that they're teaching any certain curriculum or guidelines. And the board, the policy committee didn't feel comfortable at the time of having the district sort of put our Hopewell brand on a curriculum that may or may not be happening within a student's home. You know, I'm sure that most parents are homeschooling the way they should, but us putting our transcript on is a whole nother story. So that was kind of what was holding us up and not knowing a better mechanism to do that.
Is there opportunity to think a little bit more about this? The only reason I say that is, and I'm not a scholar on the particular topic, but I do know that homeschooling in general, there's typically a very advanced level when folks who are homeschooled get into college and things of that nature, where they test on higher scores. They can test into far greater, I think, than what their grade level is in a lot of areas. So if this is an administrative issue, I would hope that maybe we can find a way of another district in the state that's done it, try to figure out how they've been able to store this and not miss out on some of the kids in the district that frankly just want to be included. Right, from a social level. That's how I was thinking about it when that family came.
Yeah, so what they do is they trust the parents to say that I'm teaching this, and then they put it in their student management system. And they just give, they take, you know, the parents' word on it. And while some of that is happening, there are other cases where it's not. And so that's our concern, where people just hold their kids out of school for various reasons, and they're, they're not getting something that we can say is worthy of something that we would have given them credit for. So that's, that's our concern.
Well, and to add, just to clarify one point is that if we said yes, we are affirming something that we have no way of truly affirming.
So on.
That, that they.
What are we affirming specifically?
That they are academically. They're eligible, academically eligible to participate.
From that standpoint, we have to characterize the specific courses that we offer and basically say, yes, they've.
Whatever that you have to verify, the state says you're supposed to have this many credits by the end of the year. And the course that you're supposed to be taking, you have to verify that being that.
And. By the state, yeah.
So to, yeah, I might be oversimplifying this, but I'm just thinking about this out loud. We are going to ask the parents to be able to verify that they are, have X whatever standard to what NJAA is saying, right? That's ultimately what we're doing. Yep. So, so the parents of the kids who have made the decision to homeschool that want their kids to be successful in whatever they're doing, we're going to, I would just think that we can. There's got to be some quantitative metric, no, that we can figure out here to.
So the only thing.
To this level? And I'm just, look, the reason I'm saying this is because we talk a lot about inclusivity. We are not being inclusive with this policy. I will say that on the record. So whether it's one kid or 50 kids that exist in our district right now, that their parents have made a decision for parents, I think without us knowing what that number is, if it's one, if it's 10, if it's 50, we are thinking, I'm thinking about it from an inclusivity standpoint. So I think that I've got to imagine there's other districts who have done this, whether it's in New Jersey or not. And I would just ask that we, let's, let's take a look. And if it's a, if it's a lift that we can't do, then let's talk about it. But if it's a lift that we can do, let's explore it. Let's find out how many kids are actually being homeschooled in the, in the district.
We, we did check with other districts, and what they're doing is taking the word of the parent and just putting grades in encores, giving the kids credit for what the parents said, without a real mechanism for verifying that. So that's what they're doing, is whether or not Hopewell is comfortable putting our transcript on something that we can't verify. That's, that's the question.
So, so let me throw something out there. I know today that there are the online school type things, right, which provide a curriculum and evaluation for parents who want to homeschool their kids. Have we, or could we look into saying that, hey, if you, if you want to homeschool, but you want your child to be able to participate in sport activities, right, you need to be utilizing one of, I don't know, two or three district approved programs because that will allow us to essentially do a grade transfer into encores and provide some amount of validation, right, and set up a system like that where the parents have an option, they can still homeschool. We'll have some amount of certainty that to some extent what, what the child is learning and the child's performance is somewhat consistent with what we have here.
We can take it back to committee.
Yes, we could certainly take that back to policy committee and look into it. We did talk about policy committee, what online platforms are out there. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey doesn't offer something, like some places offer, like, you know, Philadelphia.
Doesn't offer anything.
Right, so, but we can, we can look into it and see if there's any platforms out there that we could.
And when you say the state doesn't offer, does the state have any platforms that it accredits in any way?
We, we can certainly take it back to committee to discuss. And just for the open board, it's important to note that there was a lot of phone calls and, and research done to other schools. So we kind of got stumped at the point of the accreditation, you know, how do we certify or confirm that we believe what they're saying?
And I'll say, right, if there's, if there's no way for us to validate as a school, I wouldn't be comfortable with, with us just putting grades into encores based on the parents' report, right? And, yeah, so if, if that's where we are, that's very unfortunate.
And Mark, I totally.
Honestly seems weird.
Get Mark's point too. I mean, it would, it's honorable and important idea to be able to. And we don't have a lot of structures for support. But again, I think the best thing to do is to take it back to committee. And maybe we can better document Tripp's feedback too from, because we did have quite a number of districts and giving, that he called and then got feedback from. So I think we can, A, take it back to committee, make sure we've unearthed any other ideas and then document it a little clearer for the rest of the full board.
Just come back to the full board and kind of give us a summary of what you found.
Okay.
I don't know whether this would make people comfortable and be a compromise and whether or not it meets the state's requirements, but a pass fail on courses might make both parties happy because it's easier to prove sort of a pass fail grade and not give ABCDs. Yeah, I don't, that's why I said I don't know whether it'll meet the state's requirement.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you for, yeah, I think, I think it's important that, yeah, important conversation. Yep.
There, can we move to another new business item?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, it was brought to my attention that some parents, they were having a discussion of sending, signing their kids up for math competitions, and all those are kids in our district. And what they found was that our district does not organize at the school level for those competitions. And they did some research, a lot of the neighboring schools and districts do that. For example, Lawrenceville, Princeton, West Windsor, Robbinsville. So they're, they wanted to find out more about why the school is not in a position to support that. And more importantly, will that policy change? As we think about supporting all students' needs, that, that's an important priority for some of our students who aspire to pursue a career or more advanced studies in mathematics. And the practical challenge for them currently is they have to affiliate with another school that does this organization. Sometimes they would require them to drive like really long distance to be on those sites. And, and sometimes those schools may not take them because they are not students there. That a few of the parents did talk about coming to the next board session, the public comment session, to express their, their concerns about this.
Okay. In the past, we have, like, we've run Math Kangaroo and other competitions, but we need an adult to facilitate that. And, and so I think it was after COVID. And, and so I think it was after COVID, we weren't able to get anyone to, to do it because it's after school hours. And that was really one of the reasons why we haven't pursued it since.
I was gonna say, is this, is this an extra?
It's, and it's, it's not an approved ECA. Yeah. In the past, we've had a teacher who had, who had volunteered to do it. I know I, when I first started, I, I ran the Math Kangaroo competition.
Why, why isn't it an approved ECA?
So it's, it's an approved ECA as far as a board, at a club, the staff member's not compensated, it's not part of the collective bargaining.
So it'd be volunteer.
There are only certain positions that have been negotiated as part of being in the, in the, so many clubs that we run at the high school are volunteer.
Okay. So this would, but if, if, if nobody has an issue, this would be a, whatever you call it, a modification to the agreement.
I, I think what might have happened was years ago, our supervisory structure was different. So when I started, I was the six, 12 math supervisor. I used to run the AMC tests and all those tests myself. And then the position went K-12 and I was still running them. And then Vicky, you know, took over years later and then she was in charge of multiple district, multiple departments and things like that. And I don't think it was a feasible thing for that role to continue doing these. So then it went to the staff. It just didn't make it into negotiations. So when staff was just volunteering.
Because it wasn't on the radar, not for any particular.
Exactly. So it's, it's certainly not something that can't be changed. It would just need to be added into the next negotiations with the.
Or we could do with, with, what's the process for it?
Time sheeting?
No, no, the, the, when you change the, yeah, with a sidebar.
You could do a sidebar. We typically don't do that for an ECA, but we do have negotiations coming up very soon. So again, for the teachers, yep. Next year we'll be starting again.
Yeah, yes.
Volunteers.
So I was gonna suggest maybe to see if, to gauge what they're interested, how many people are actually interested and if there is enough interest. Because it doesn't sound like it's a policy issue, it's a, it's a, it's a staff issue.
Interest, for interest on math competition.
Yeah, thanks for the follow up. I, I think the parents with kids who are interested in that would really appreciate the school organization. It really makes things a lot easier. And also as we think about student achievement, that could be one additional aspect of things that the district is proud of.
Okay. Any other new items? All right, moving on. Thank you for. Oh, okay. All right, moving on to public comment. Number two, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
Hey folks, I'm, I'm Suze Polinski, I live in Hopewell Township. Sorry, Suze Polinski, I live in Hopewell Township. I come a lot, usually on time, but not tonight. I missed your six o'clock change, sorry. I wasn't planning to speak, but I am also really interested in the issue that you brought up about the kiddo who wants to play for Hopewell. I heard a kid who would meet a high bar the night that she spoke. I think that it would be worth it to set a high bar. I keep thinking of the option two policy. I have a kid who's insisted on engaging in that a couple of years and it's a high bar, it's a pain in the neck, but there is that New Jersey virtual school option. I don't know if that fits here, you guys know a lot more than I do, but I would think about something like that. I would offer somebody who bothered to come to a board meeting and ask you, give her a high bar and see if she wants to hit it. I think that would be a great thing for us to do and I like thinking of it as an inclusivity issue. So thanks for continuing conversations like that. It would be easier to just move past them and I appreciate having a board that takes the time to do that. Feels like a time commitment to me to come here once a month, so I'm very aware of how much more time you guys put in. So thanks for doing it, I appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Any other?
Come on up.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Public comment is now closed. Okay. All right, we, I need a first and a second to move into executive session. To discuss HIB and. Student, two student matters. Note, yay, look at you all on the board. No action will be taken.
First.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? You may be retired if you. Okay, thank you all for your attendance.